Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 21th House Meeting. This meeting has been advertised in accordance with the Public Meetings Act of NJAC 104-6, with adequate notice that this meeting being provided to the borough's two official newspapers to be published on the borough's website. Public comments are pursuant to Article 4, Section 2 of the bylaws that presiding officers shall limit. Such discussion to not more than three minutes in duration. Ms. Antonis, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilman Benjavanga.
Here.
Councilwoman Faustini.
Here.
Councilwoman Ma.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Bullock is away on vacation this week. And Council President White.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the cullate allegiance and reaffirmation of our Councilman Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today to ask for guidance to all our council members and our residents to give us the strength and the wisdom to do the right for this borough. Dear Heavenly Father, on this special day that we honor the birthday of Martin Luther King, let us all rejoice that we should enjoy unity. In this, your name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Antonis, can you take us through the review of tonight's agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have the approval of council minutes for December 16th and January 6th. We have one proclamation. We have one ordinance on for second reading by title, four ordinances on for first reading by title. We have seventeen resolutions this evening, three matters of correspondence, payment bills totaling $7,066,961.58, council reports, and we have executive session. And we conclude with an adjournment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council comments on any items?
Yes, Mayor. Can you please separate Resolution 25-75?
25-75, yes. Any other council comments? Just before we open it up for public comments, anyone who'd like to address the mayor's council regarding any matters, including those items on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address. And, uh...
Um, sorry. Do you want to meet? Do you just want someone to jump in or raise hands? Sorry.
Yeah. If you're online, we'll get to you. We have an individual in the council. I'll unmute you at your turn. Okay? Sir?
Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Louis Kaniglio, 410 Gitter Avenue, South Plainfield, New Jersey. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of South Plainfield, council members, Mayor Anish. My name is Louis Kaniglio, and I've been a proud resident of South Plainfield for fourteen years. Like many in this room, I chose this town for its strong sense of community, conservative values, and family values. Today, I'm here to share how the recently passed ordinance 2321 on short-term rentals has upended not just my business, but my ability to contribute to our town's economic development and social fabric. For over five years, I've operated short-term rentals in South Plainfield. My property wasn't just a business, it was a bridge between our town and the people who visited here. I hosted families, attending graduations, reunions, professionals on work assignments, service members passing time with families before deployment, and countless first responders visiting to help our community and nearby communities. I've always maintained high standards, minimum five nights days, careful guest screening, and a strict no party or disruption policy. In all that time, I've never once received a single complaint, infraction, or violation of any kind. This ordinance has effectively ended my ability to operate responsibly, cutting off the business that not only supported my family, but also benefited South Plainfield. My guests patronized local restaurants, shopped at our stores, and left with glowing impressions of our town. My work brought value here, not disruption. The income from this business is vital for feeding my family, and as some of you may know, my mother, Glory Irwin, passed away this past Easter at just fifty-six years old, at which point I took on the responsibility of having my elderly grandparents, Bill and Virginia Irwin, move into my home in South Plainfield to care for them. My grandmother, eighty-three years old, who served our community as a teacher at Kennedy Elementary School for thirty-one years, and my grandfather, eighty-six years old, who was recently diagnosed with blood cancer and Parkinson's disease. Losing this income has placed me in an incredibly difficult position that feels both frustrating, terrifying, and unnecessary. I truly understand the need to protect our neighborhoods from bad actors and disruptive properties, but this ordinance doesn't differentiate between responsible operators and those who disregard our community standards and are even part of our community, as they clearly don't care about it. To put what I do in the same category of these bad actors is not only incorrect, but disingenuous. That's why I'm asking the council to please consider an addendum that creates a fair pathway forward, one, either grandfather responsible operators into compliance with clear records, or two, establishing a permitting system to allow oversight while keeping responsible operators alive. There are very few short-term rentals in South Plainfield, so implementing these changes would require minimal resources while ensuring safety, fairness, and balance. I'm even willing to work with the council and property departments to develop thoughtful regulations and rules that work for everyone, free of charge, to make this work for everyone. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. I hope we can find a solution that supports responsible business owners, protects our neighborhoods, and maintains the values that make South Plainfield such a wonderful place to live. And excuse me if I'm not able to stay for the whole meeting, as my grandfather was just rushed to JFK Hospital, and I have to attend to him. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Sorry about your grandfather.
Thank you.
Any council comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would like just to have this discussion, because we enacted this ordinance for a purpose, and my condolences to you and your family, and also all wishes and prayers to your family and to the council. But, you know, South Plainfield's always been a close knit community, I'm third generation To put it quite frank, short-term rentals, in my opinion, doesn't meet municipal land use law with a single-family use zone. These zones are designated for single-family use, or one and two-family use, depending on where you are, for a purpose, for single-family use. Short-term rentals, in my opinion, do not meet that classification under the municipal land use law. So while we, even though we have an ordinance in place, I still think that it's a violation of our zoning ordinance to have a short-term rental in a single-family zone. First, that's the first point. Second, I have three children, six, four, and two. While I respect you as a businessman, and I think that what you're doing obviously is great for your family, as anybody would do. I have six, four, and a two-year-old. I don't know, and I definitely, I should say, I do know, that I don't know, I don't want somebody living next door to me that I change his hands every week. Not knowing when my kids are outside playing, who's going to be next door? Good, bad, or different? To me, it doesn't matter. It's a fact that you don't have consistency next door. There's nothing to say that you can't do a long-term rental. It's financially benefit to you to do a long-term rental? I don't see why you can't do that. My family, my father, has been a landowner in South Plainfield for decades, has been a landlord in South Plainfield, has never once rented a short-term rental, because we believe in the fabric of South Plainfield: family, business, and industry. It's a family town. You want to own a hotel? Go in a hotel zone and do it in that zone. My opinion is, I don't want any short-term rentals in this town. Here. That's my view.
Any other council comments, please?
I actually do. Um, you know, I know, I understand where you're coming from and that this is your livelihood. As a Realtor, for example, when I write a contract, it's specifically stated on there, you know, for a buyer to do their due diligence, go on the New Jersey sex offender registry. And they could decide, you know, if they want to continue on with the purchase based on the location of registered sex offenders. Short-term rentals don't require, um, that the potential, you know, sex offender is registered if they're staying somewhere for a few days, you know? I think that's also a very big concern. And I know that I, too, would be very concerned, not knowing who's coming in and out. You know, I understand that you're saying you have brought in some really great people, and it sounds like you have. But on the sex offender thing, I think that's also a very big concern for a residence. So I just wanted to point that out, and hope that you do at least understand that point of view.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, the residents have made it clear that that's not something that they want in the borough either. Understanding what you said, I understand that you've rented to military and people like that, it's just that, to the comments that were already previously mentioned, that was the reason we passed the ordinance. And at this point, I don't know what we can do with regard to that.
So I think there were two points that you brought up. One being some grandfather issue. Paul, I don't know...
I don't think, first of all, it has to be a permitted use.
So it would be a permitted use. So even with this ordinance coming in, it wouldn't grandfather anybody previously, unlike an actual zoning change or something like that?
The zoning change is what is usually when a grandfather of the issue comes in, resisting non-conform use. That's not what we did here.
Gotcha. So that doesn't look applied. I think the second thing is coming up with some kind of licensing to be able to differentiate between good actors and bad actors. And again, this is something that our zoning officer initially brought up, and that would certainly differentiate you, who I trust has had no complaints on your property, versus some others in town who've had multiple complaints and causing, you know, alarm and issues within the neighborhood. Even with that, and the, somebody's saying they can't hear, I don't know if you can hear better now, even with those potential, you know, solutions, a method like that would certainly be able to differentiate between good actors and bad actors. And I think there is probably some legal and issues we're trying to go after bad actors in that method, right? There's certainly a lot of issues that we've discussed offhand. I think even if you get past that, you still don't get past the concerns that this governing body has, and that is changing the real impact of single-family homes, not even saying multifamily homes within the borough. This would apply particularly to, you know, somebody in a condominium complex as well, where the same scenario would be happening, that the door across the hall continues to change on a day-by-day potentially or week-by-week basis. Well, government is often way behind the curve, and I think that is our fault here, right? Airbnbs and the landscape has changed. You obviously changed with that, as well as some others. And zoning laws and ordinances don't necessarily, weren't obviously needed to be thought of or in place at that time to deal with these things. And as often is the case, they're not brought to the forefront of any governing body's attention until we start hearing complaints from residents and a way to look at that. And that's, I think, exactly what happened here. A couple of bad actors, you know, an ordinance like this may not have ever been proposed or brought forward. But again, I think even with the solutions that you have, I think you have a difficult time getting past changing the inherent nature of a single-family home to that of something of a more quasi-commercial district, which would be any of our, you know, zones where we allow hotels. And I know certainly folks much younger than some of us up here, maybe not as, maybe with the exception of councilmen, most of us are still in the mindset that we go on vacation, we go somewhere, we go to a hotel. I know the world's changing, and people are looking at all sorts of ways to stay, and they stay at Airbnb's. My kids have gone out, and they've gone away as well. Me, I don't want to say I'm old-fashioned, I'm up to the idea. I think it has some instance, and it has some applicability in certain areas that are more towards attractions. And I think there's some understanding that comes with the residents who buy houses in those areas for commercial or investment, you know, means or motives. Fortunately, this, most residents, all residents really coming into a residential zone, a single-family home in South Plainfield, are not looking at turning that into a money-making venture. And to the councilman's point, you know, this is a community with a bunch of young families, whose interest is making sure that they get up, that they grow with that neighborhood and that they get to know their neighbors. And, you know, I just don't see how an Airbnb or short-term rental, again, this isn't an Airbnb, this is a short-term rental, you know, an ordinance. I just don't see how that really operates, you know, in that structure of a community here. Now, look, we have, we're not advocating for hotels and stuff like that versus individuals versus residents, but clearly, you know, South Plainfield, in around, you know, next year will be a hundred years. We do have certain, a number of, you know, hotels within the borough, around the surrounding areas, that need that short-term rental need. So it isn't that we don't have a way to meet that need, other than having residents or investors buy homes and rent them on a short-term basis. Well, it's unfortunate, but without this governing body working and to change that ordinance to something that would meet, you know, a licensing thing, I just don't see that this ordinance is going to change and that this kind of activity is going to be permissible in the borough. Probably what you wanted to hear, and I can certainly understand having, you know, a number of properties that have been operating without incident, that that's, you know, it's not the greatest news that you would expect to hear. And I don't think any of us take it here lightly. We certainly are often put in a place of balancing one resident's viewpoint and desires versus another. And, you know, it never works out for everybody. And it's always something that I know we put a lot of thought into and a lot of the bait, but this one is probably about as stark as any that have come before us, especially when we have operators like you, like I said, who've been operating, you know, in a decent and fair manner for a number of years. It would be so much easier if we had a litany of zoning complaints or police complaints against you as an operator to say that, hey, we don't want you in this community. That's not the case here. And so that makes it extremely difficult for us to, you know, to maintain that position. But, you know, I don't know that you understand our position or agree with it. I think that's the position of most of the members here. I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to weigh.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to say that. When this first came about, and we were getting some pushback from the residents, that was the first time I ever heard of short-term rental being in South Plainfield. And it really struck a nerve, because there was a lot of bad actors. And, you know, and having that person with the family, I can relate to that. And so when I looked at the ordinance, I talked to the attorneys, and I looked at other towns, Bridgewater and others that have enacted some of these things, and ours are actually looser than most of them. And I was saying to the attorney, I said, well, how can we get more teeth into this and make it stronger so that we can actually have consequences that have a bigger ripple effect than what these are? So that was kind of the way I was leaning at that point. Now, you know, looking to loosen, I just, that's just not what I would do.
If I could comment too, I understand Councilman Benjavanga's point, you know, I respect you guys. Like, I have nothing but respect for all of you, even though, you know, you're saying, you're saying it goes against obviously what I want. I don't have any bad blood towards anybody. I would never disrespect our community. I would never put my neighbors in any harm, obviously purposefully. That's why, like, I meet every guest at the door, I look them in the face, I shake their hand, I know what they're here for. I treat eighty percent of them for coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, or Klop Coffee, or tea, or whatever they're into. I put my life into this, you know what I mean? Like, I've been doing this full-time for half a decade, so I can understand too if it was, I was just doing it for like a year or two years or whatever, but I literally have use case, proof case, example, like, literally hundreds of examples, over, you know, four hundred reviews on the platform. I have a 4.98, I don't know if you ever used Airbnb before, but that's really difficult to maintain. I, again, I completely respect your position with kids. I want to have kids in this town. So, you know, if there was, to me, though, it's the same as if there was an irresponsible bar on the corner with an unruly owner that was, you know, causing harm and where there's homes around it, that, you know, somebody could be drunk and drive into a house. I feel like it's the same thing, and that's why permitting and licensing does exist. So I, and I don't think that it would really affect anybody else. Like, it's surely not going to affect any of you if I'm operating a responsible business and doing the right thing, but it's just, that's why permitting and licensing exists, because you're giving trust, you know, you're putting certain trust into certain individuals to do certain things. So, you know, as I said, I completely understand all the points that are made. Councilwoman Ma, I understand your point as well, to speak to that, but I can't confirm. I don't accept any reservations that have no license, like no ID, and I believe Airbnb does check for any sort of incidents with individuals, whether it be, you know, just Beckett-Hurley community. I also don't host anybody with any previous, without any previous reviews. A lot of times, I end up hosting traveling nurses and, you know, traveling construction workers. During COVID, I did, I hosted traveling insurance adjusters a lot, just, again, people that don't really feel comfortable staying at hotels, and it's like a different price, you know, point in some cases. So I feel like in this situation, as Mayor Anish pointed out, this is very new, you know? Like, when Uber came out, I don't know if any of you guys used Uber ever, I had to use an Uber to get here, because I had to leave my girlfriend at JFK Hospital with the car. Essentially, they, there was a lot of pushback, there was a lot of people fighting that. I feel very deeply, and obviously my opinion is biased, that this is one of those situations. I feel that Airbnb is also growing as an app and as a, basically scanning people and making sure, making sure that people are on point. And if there was legislation that backed that up, maybe, I think it would go well. I think it could go well. But again, I do understand Councilman Benjavanga and Councilwoman Ma's, you know, reservations with it, and I completely respect you guys, you know, and I still support you guys regardless of any of this. So, but I think that, to my original point, a short-term rental, to me, is like a hotel. And if you're in a residential zone, you shouldn't be operating a hotel like business out of a residential zone. That's a single-family zone, even if it's two-family, or like the mayor said, you know, multifamily. It's no different than mother-daughters who are not committed in South Plainfield. You have to go for parents for mother-daughter. It's just one of those things that, it's a hotel under the definition of municipal land use laws, it's a short-term rental. And so there's two aspects to this, right? There's, yes, there's the issues that come along with having them as your neighbor, not knowing who they are. You could be the most excellent business owner possible, and then you sell your property and the next person cannot be you, right? So we can't just make a law around yourself. But the fact remains is that it's a single-family zone, and that's the part that I have a hard time coming over.
I agree. And I think the, you know, with the lift and the cars, I think it's a different level of analogy. I think a lot of the opposition there was New York medallion taxi owners, right? They barely lose their livelihood because the medallion that they paid for is now pretty much worthless. You had to overcome the fact of an individual getting into an Uber, a stranger they don't know, and not a marked taxi, but I think that was a small part. The biggest opposition in my recollection was to medallion owners who had an investment, and obviously that, you know, kind of changed the landscape for taxis. In most cities, New York is still hanging in.
I wanted to point actually just one more thing out. So like, you know, I understand what you're saying about getting a permit and things like that, but listen, not everybody's like you is the problem, right? So I was also a landlord, you have to, you're supposed to, every tenant change, get a certificate of occupancy from the borough, right? You think everybody does that? I mean, of course, I did that. But not everybody's like me, not everybody follows the rules, and they just don't do it. So it's kind of like the same thing. So you could be amazing, your tenants can be amazing, but what do we do with those who are not? Like, we can't have it okay for you and not okay for others, you know what I mean? And the people who are doing things that they shouldn't be doing certainly aren't going to apply for a permit, right? So it's kind of, besides all of the other issues that we have mentioned, I mean, that's just, you know, it's, of course, it's, it's just not one size fits all. What's really going negatively impact...
Even in a hundred percent compliant borough, you still don't get it beyond the councilman's initial point, that you're putting that activity in a...
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. Completely separate...
Yeah. The licensing part, you could wrap around that, everybody's great operator, every guest, you're still, you can't get past that part of it, right? Okay. We have one individual online, did you want? We have one individual online, I'm not sure, is that Mr. Patel? If you can take yourself off, you just state your name and address for the clerk and receive your question.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Ashen Patel, I'm a resident of South Plainfield, live in, live on Arlington Avenue, south of Belmont. So I'll start by saying apologizing, I'm a citizen, I don't play your ceremonies or anything, so please bear with me.
Not yet.
I'm, I'm bringing to the matter, which actually originated with the Board of Education and the district superintendent. And if you bear with me, I'll explain to you why I'm also not bringing this issue in here. So in the last year, 2024 to 2025, the Board of Education and the superintendent decided to take the state law of no longer providing transportation to students within two-mile radius and high school students beyond 2.5 mile radius. Another thing that also happened last year was, or 2023, the Board of Education of New Jersey issued a new guidance, a new law around hazardous routing. So I represent myself, plus many, many different families, and it was kind of nice to hear at the last discussion where this councilman, with the council team, and you all have a long history here. The complaints and the concerns we brought up is really the riskiness and the hazardous of these changes that the Board of Education and the superintendent have made without really considering the hazardous routing guidelines, which includes commercial traffic zones, lack of clear walking pathways, shortest distance from homes to schools, crossing over bridges, and I heard something about sex offenders, we also identified legitimate sex offenders on the route. And the, and our children impacted are twelve-year-olds, and they've also taken away bussing for early children, five, six-year-olds coming into school. We, we've been, we've been going back and forth, and with all of that, we also have reached out to the police department, and the very nice gentleman over there, worked to us to put a guard crossing, but still the fundamental issue of hazardous routing still retains, and this is an issue that we have been requesting both formally as well as attending more than four or five the Board of Education district meetings. And we're at a point where we escalated to the Middlesex superintendent, as well as getting ready to escalate to the New Jersey State superintendent, and through the guidance of the superintendent and Board of Education, we have escalated to seven to eight guidance of the resident. Now, the issue over here in the hazardous routing, according to what we read and understood clearly with guidance from even neighboring districts is, it's a collaboration between this township as well as the Board of Education. We've just really tried super hard, it's been really frustrating. We put up a petition with signatures reaching over four hundred signatures now, and we're just at a point where both Board of Education and the superintendent have stopped responding to our requests. To make matters worse, we also identified that the district has been providing transportation to other families who live within these guidelines, and to students who do not qualify for IUD or special sort of circumstances, and we highlighted this as well, and they ignored this. And the law clearly states that... And the law clearly states that if the school district is providing, um, specialty busing, which they are for grade school and other students, they should be adopting this law which we highlighted to them. And they continue to provide unreasonable requests for us to, for example, talk, talk to the senator, for example, uh, talk to, uh, bus companies who are pushing us back to the district. And what we're really looking for is your support, that spirit of family, uh, to really, uh, help us with the safety of our children. There's been a situation where my youngest daughter pleaded to me in tears that please say my older sister, please don't, don't let her die. And we've seen numerous situations, uh, of students walking down the streets south of Belmont and along the road near the, uh, the local, uh, offices right by Belmont with no payment, with large trucks just crossing them. And I, and we really don't know what to do. We're just seeking some support from you. We've seen other mayors and other districts also some voices for us. Uh, we send something out in details. We're happy to provide more details.
Yeah, I think I've seen
It was a little bit frustrating.
No, you, well, I think you're, you're right, it sounds frustrating. So I think I've seen your petition. Let me reach out to the superintendent. Like you were saying, you went through several school board meetings and, and I guess no action. Obviously, look, this is outside of these governing bodies of our legal authority. We can, you know, we can certainly weigh in, um, but obviously you're going to need that Board of Education to make any kind of changes. Chief, this hazardous routing that came through the department or?
Yeah, the, the, um, after speaking with Paul, the determination of hazardous ruses on the arrest with the Board of Education.
Really?
We, we, we work with them, um, as Mr. Patel said, getting the crossing guard at Belmont to help out, but ultimately the, I guess, the selection of hazardous ruses, arrest with them.
Okay. Um, I'm going to be there about Mr. Patel.
Where is the definition of a hazardous route? Is it their definition or is there another definition? The state?
With, with the guideline from
I got it from the state.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got it from the state, yeah.
So you mentioned Senator Diamond. You mentioned Senator Diamond. And so you, maybe you had a, a meeting with Senator Diamond?
Uh, have not been able to get to meeting with Senator Diamond. His office did reach out, uh, and say that he, he's been, he's been threatened for obvious reasons. Uh, we are trying to get this. We did get support from their office, saying, yes, that acknowledged the issue, and hoping that the local leadership would sort of help guide that forward.
So let me try to reach out, let me try to reach out to the Senate. Are you the, are you the, the fact of the, of the group?
Uh,
Or no?
I'm recording. Uh, that, so I, I, I mean the loudest because I, I have started. I, I, I was just, uh, I was just about to joke that, you know, the board and the superintendent called me the jinx of the day.
I don't know if I want to deal with the things for that. Well, if you'd be a favor, um, I'm not going to ask for your phone number over a public meeting. You just, please email me tonight. Uh, my email address is an A-N-E-S-H at southplainfieldnj.com. I'm on the borough website. Just shoot me your contact information. I'll reach out to the superintendent, president of the board, and Senator Diamond, and see if we can figure out what their rationale for is. We obviously cannot, you know, can't guarantee any change, but I can at least find out if they'll, uh, respond to me and, and see what their, what their rationale is, um, you know, for that. I'm sure part of it is, is, uh, you know, is funding. Um, I'm not quite sure what the rest of it is, right? If there's dangerous conditions out there and, and, um, you know, they can make it work, I'm, I'm not quite sure. But I, I'm not up to speed on this issue, and, and so I don't want to, when I get too far over my skis, which I tend to do, um, but if you shoot me your contact information, I, I, and I'll reach out to the Senator, I'll reach out to, reach out to the superintendent and just see if we can find out at least what they respond to me, if, what their explanation is, and I can share that with you, and maybe we can look at, you know, next steps.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I do appreciate that. And also to be clear, we're, we're willing to pay for subscription busing, which is the guidelines that, uh, in the, in the New Jersey law. We, we also agreed to do that, but we're not willing to do that. And I just want to also share that you, you travel back and forth to New York. Because of this, this issue, my daughter understands one hour in nineteen degrees weather, waiting for me because of train cancellation. So it's just not right. I, I, I just don't see the logic over here.
You're on the train with me? You're on the train with me, you say?
I, I, gangsters, I don't know.
He's, he's just about to
You're on the train with me, say hello. Just don't scare me.
Yes, I will, will, will too. I, I will send you more details. I'm just happy to, to do all the things that we've done a lot.
Well, let's work on another meeting.
I'm not that old.
I, I don't want to be, I'm not going to be associated with the gangster leader. I can't wait to do that.
Considering you married me, considering you married me about twenty years ago, I hope.
Ah.
Ah, well, congratulations. I only greet people together. I don't think, not, not one of my, my weddings have ended up in disaster, so I can thank that email. Congratulations. Um, and like I said, just shoot me that email and we'll get together soon, and, and maybe on our New Jersey Transit train. Can't be a first location in that, but not a problem. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Cullen, I think you're, you're hand up as well. Or is it your, is your hand just up for no reason?
Okay, thank you. You're married, we can hear.
Yeah.
Darling, I'll tap into. I just have two quick questions, um, about ordinance two three three six. So will anyone currently selling electronic smoking devices be grandfathered in or will all have to comply? And then number two, will this ordinance regulate smoke shops, um, as far as how many South Plainfield is allowed to have and their location?
Mr. Rizov.
The answer to number one is no, that nobody's getting grandfathered in.
So it's a no on the number one, no grandfather.
I didn't catch everything of the second question.
What did it imply to smoke shops?
It's limiting the amount of smoke shops.
Or limiting the amount of smoking?
It does, just because they're, they're a retail business, so you can't, so under, under the code, it's a retail business, but they sell a regulated, regulated product. So you, you're licensing the product.
So it's notable.
Notable.
Notable?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council chambers for council comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just state your name for the clerk and receive your questions. And we've done a terrible job of keeping to three minutes tonight, but do your best.
Salute working with the all-boosted, and this obviously affects me too. And, uh, well, my question is, um, our lawyer, so your Mr. Rizov, huh?
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Linus.
Mr. Rizov, you, yeah, you spoke to him?
I did.
Oh.
Okay, and I have to get back to him, but we had a conversation.
Oh, no, I know you spoke to him, but, but we, we, this was concerning, uh, uh, NJSA forty, colon, fifty-five D dash sixty-eight, which is a non-conforming, uh, pre-existing.
Which is just illegal terminology for grandfather.
Okay. Well, I, it's just that I don't know if any, any of the council members were aware of the mayor, or where that this was going on at this point.
I talked to Mr. Linus. If I remember correctly, Friday, Thursday, Friday, um, he sent me what he wanted me to look into.
Right.
And candidly, I've started to look into it, but I've started a trial on Tom Werner. I haven't finished looking into it.
Well, we feel, we feel very strongly about this, this, and feel that this will, this supersedes anything else. So that's the position that we're taking on this. Uh, I'm not sure how it's going to pan out, but, uh,
I will continue the conversation with Mr. Linus.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else? One, two, three, I think it goes to public portion. At this point, I'll ask for your motion to approve the council minutes of December sixteenth agenda, public executive, the January sixth reorganization and executive session. So
Second.
Motion by Council President White, seconded by Councilman Smith. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Passe's five zero.
We have one proclamation on tonight. Dr. Martin Luther King. Bear with me, I forgot my reading glasses. Whereas each year, America set aside a day to remember a giant of our nation's history and pioneer of the civil rights movement. During his lifetime, lifelong struggle for injustice and equality, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. gave mighty, gave his mighty briefs with the quiet hopes of millions and reminded us that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And whereas he challenged America to make good on its founding promise, and he called upon every lover of freedom to walk alongside his brothers and sisters. And whereas we honor all who marched, bled, and died for civil rights, we celebrate the great victories of the last half-century of civil rights and voting laws. New opportunities in the classroom and the workforce, a, a more fair and free America, not only for Americans, but for us all. And whereas we are also reminded that our journey is not complete, it is our task to build upon the gains of the past generations from challenging new barriers to the, to the vote to ensuring the scales of justice work equally for all people. And we must advance another cause central to both Dr. King's career and the civil rights movement, that they can be in good jobs, decent wages, quality education, and a fair deal. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King calls that an individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity. In honor of this spirit, Americans across the country will come together for a day of service. By volunteering our time and energy, we can build stronger, healthier, more resilient communities. Today, let's put aside our narrow ambitions, lift up one another, and march a little closer to the nation Dr. King envisioned. And the Department of Defense, Mayor of South Plainfield, do hereby urge all citizens to remember Dr. King with appropriate civic, community, and service projects in the Borough of South Plainfield. And for, uh, final adoption, ordinance twenty-three thirty-five.
An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-three oh four that provides for the compensation of employees of the borough of South Plainfield and the method of payment as such compensation for the years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight for non-union professionals and governing bodies.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for final adoption on ordinance twenty-three thirty-five?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, seconded by Councilwoman Foschini. Uh, council comments regarding the final adoption of ordinance twenty-three thirty-five?
Can we, can you put that in like more English? Better, you know, so that maybe layman people can
What, the ordinance title?
Yeah, well, the, the ordinance itself.
The ordinance is, is amending the salary ordinance for code of the borough of South Plainfield.
Okay, and?
And what? How specifically?
I mean, for somebody who doesn't understand what the
We had some positions that we had to add into there, where there were civil service positions.
Okay.
That we added to the code.
Okay, so that's basically what that's saying?
Yes, it's, it's, it's amending the salary ordinance to add positions to
Okay. Positions within the borough?
Correct, non-contractual positions.
Okay, like borough employees?
Depends, non, non-contractual, non-union employees.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I should say not contracted, not, it's for
Non-union professionals.
Yeah, non-union professionals. Not like your AFSMI or your Team Sturridge, they have separate ordinances.
Right.
This is for, you know, construction official, uh, fire, fire, uh, official, you know, your department heads and your non-contractuals.
Okay. All right, that's better. Thank you.
We had a couple of positions we had to add.
Okay, thank you.
Since we have a public portion open, if there's any other comments, go
Well, I, I
Twenty-three thirty-five.
Was that supposed to go under the public portion?
Yeah, that's fine. We open it up to public comments.
Okay.
Anyone else? Goes to public portion. Council comments on ordinance twenty-three thirty-five?
None.
Nothing, no.
Thank you. Ms. Antonides, can you call?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Passe's five zero.
Thank you. For introduction, ordinance twenty-three thirty-six.
An ordinance to create a new chapter entitled sale of electronic smoking devices and electronic smoking device products for the borough of South Plainfield.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty-three thirty-six? Sold.
Second.
Motion by Council President White, seconded by Councilman Benjavanga. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Uh, I would like to think this over a little bit further, so I'm going to go for now.
Councilman Smith?
I as well would like to abstain, so I can read this ordinance.
Okay, I have Councilman Smith as an abstain.
You have a note.
Councilwoman Ma, I have as a note.
An abstain.
Correct. Um, keep it as a no. Okay. And moving on, uh, Council President White?
Yes.
That is three one. Yes, passe's three one.
Passe's three one. Three oh one. Thank you. And for, uh, introduction, ordinance twenty-three thirty-seven.
An ordinance of the borough of South Plainfield, County Millsack, New Jersey, amending chapter seventeen of the code that borough regarding boards, committees, and commissions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty-three thirty-seven?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Foschini, seconded by Council President White. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Passe's five zero.
Thank you. For introduction, ordinance twenty-three thirty-eight.
Bond warrants provided for improvements to South Plainfield Avenue, Vale Court, Mindford Avenue, and other various roads in and by the borough of South Plainfield in the County Millsack, New Jersey, appropriating one million eighty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty-three thirty-eight? Sold.
Second.
Motion by Council President White, seconded by Councilwoman Ma. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Passe's five zero.
Thank you. Also for introduction, ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine.
An ordinance providing for reconstruction improvements to the Happy Roads Silver Lines in and by the borough of South Plainfield and the County Millsack, New Jersey, appropriating five hundred thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of five hundred thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty-three thirty-nine?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, seconded by Council President White. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Council President, uh, Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foschini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Council President White?
Yes.
Passe's five zero.
Uh, thank you. So the public hearing final adoption of the ordinance is twenty-three thirty-six through[1675.87] twenty-three thirty-nine will be held on February third, approximately seventeenth. Can I get a motion for resolutions twenty-five dash sixty-one through twenty-five dash seventy-four, twenty-five dash seventy-six through twenty-five seventy-seven?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, seconded by Councilman... Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faustini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Council President White?
Yes.
Pess is five zero.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for resolution twenty-five dash seventy-five?
So moved.
Motion by Council President White, seconded by Councilman Benjavanga. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faustini?
Recuse.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Council President White?
Yes.
Pess is four zero.
Can I give you a free response for the health monthly report for December, health advisory ordinance for December tenth, NJDCA five hundred thousand dollar grant for capital improvements and windows? Can I get a motion for payment of bills of seven million sixty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars and what appears to be fifty-eight cents?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Council President White. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faustini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Pess is five zero.
Do we need a vote on executive session, right?
You will, yes.
You will. I probably do that before council reports because I'll forget. Can I get a motion for executive session resolution twenty-five dash seventy-eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman White, seconded by Councilman Smith. Ms. Antonides, can you call the roll?
Councilman Benjavanga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faustini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Council President White?
Yes.
Pess is five zero.
Now, council reports and other items. Ms. Antonides, anything for us tonight?
Progress, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
No, Mr. Mayor, progress.
Mr. Miller, how was the snowstorm?
Wonderful. We got it on about three o'clock in the morning.
Good work. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, we're working with Senior Center to do another fraud prevention and awareness seminar hopefully the end of February. We'll keep everyone updated with their hard date.
Thank you. I think the state of New Jersey just came out with a new one, right? There's something going around?
Yeah, there's a new one going around with... Is it a package?
A package, it's like an EZ Pass, an EZ Pass one two.
And USPS.
USPS.
EZ Pass one, I've gotten it a couple of times and it has an international number, whether or not. And it says your parking lane fees are due or you have a toll or something, but it's an international number, has a country code.
I'd have to give Trudy the credit over there. She raised the concerns, you know, some problems they've been having, so...
Awesome. Very much needed in Washington. Anything else, Chief?
That's all, progress.
Thank you. I guess they're not just senior scams. Everybody falls for them, unfortunately nowadays. Mr. Rizzo, anything for us tonight?
Progress, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Ma?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Len, I'm very happy to be back with you as the liaison to DPW. You got some pretty rave reviews for the snowstorm, so thank you for that. It was a really nice job.
Don't mention it, sir.
Also, Christina Maraca, as you know, Pete and I kind of overlap, it overlaps with the Environmental Committee. Christina Maraca with DPW, she handles Clean Communities, which includes Adopt a Spot, and there are plenty of spots available to adopt. Basically, you choose an area, you have a sign that goes out with your family name or your business name, and, you know, you clean up multiple times a year and litter that appears on the property. So, you have openings for that and encourage anyone interested to contact Christina at DPW. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Faustini?
Thank you, Mayor. On this coldest of cold winter evenings, I will just let everybody know that first week of February, registration for the community pool should be available, hoping for a nice warm summer, and registration for the camp should open the end of the month of February. And we have a STEM program starting up, so if you're looking for anyone in grades one to five, that will open next week. And with that, progress.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, how are you today?
PT.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that attended the Lunar New Year. It was very nice. I was with Councilwoman Faustini and I heard that they had a very nice time. The line dancing and the drums and someone came a little late, but we won't mention any names, but his initials are Derek White. But we did have a great time there and welcomed them into their New Year's. I want to thank Chief Papa. We've been working and to see the signs for the e-bikes, we just have to get a better, I think, we're going to have to come up with some type of ordinance down the road. Because I don't think it's the kids that are going to schools that are violating these laws as much as we have residents or non-residents that just ride on the wrong side of the road. Papa Mueller's in the center lane with e-bikes and it's got to be stopped with that. I want to thank Council President White for putting me back on the planning board. I attended their meeting. It was very well-run by Chairman Ackerman. I couldn't think of the title that he had. And some questions on that, but I did go to the environmental meeting and explain to them that the environmental advisory committee is to the beautification of our borough. And that's their job. And with what Councilwoman Ma stated about the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup, that she will be running that. And Ms. Boyle has worked with the Green Team on trying to procure a grant from P S E and G to do things. We have a Green Team meeting on the twenty-third this month. Teacher Kathleen Bett has a group at the high school that we're going to try to, again now, to come to the council meeting and make presentations, hopefully at least once, but I'm trying to shoot for twice, at least twice a year, that they do that. And I look forward to working with them and beautifying our town. And resident John McCobble is running the tree program. It's something else that we need to start to focus on and they do have a company that has waterbag trees and we're working on something that we'll have to work with the DPW for the first year or so that have waterbags and will take money from the grants that we[1633.52]